Good morning, everyone. I will call to order the August 1st, 2024 Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. County Administrator Gary Schmidt, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Chair Smith. First, our staff support today: County Council Jane Vedo, Clerk to the Board Tony Marneck. Roll call: Commissioner Savis.
Present.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. I will now lead in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in public comment, we will prompt you, reprompt you how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public that Robert's Rules of Order will be followed in this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Gary, what's the first item today?
Thank you, Chair. First is a presentation of the 2024 National Association of Counties Achievement Award for the Coordinating Housing Access Improvement Program from Health Housing and Human Services. Ed Nieto from Public and Government Affairs will present.
Thank you, Gary. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Administrator Schmidt.
Ed, before you start, I'd like to make mention of one very significant fact, is Clackamas County is the only county in Oregon that received a national award at this month's National Conference in Florida. Just have to, I have to praise you all. You all did it, and you deserve the recognition. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Certainly, thank you. Certainly, we're celebrating. It's hard to believe it's been a year since we were here last. It went really fast. This morning, we're here to celebrate, as you said, the innovative Clackamas County project that earned a 2024 Achievement Award from the National Association of Counties, more commonly known as NACO. The Clackamas County Coordinated Housing Access Improvement Program received the award given in the category of Human Services. In just a few minutes, you'll learn more about the program and its considerable and positive impact on the county. With this award, Clackamas County has now earned 12 NACO awards in just the last four years, which is the most of any county in Oregon.
Yee-haw!
Yes, and as you said, it's also the only NACO award given to a county in Oregon as well. Each year, NACO recognizes counties for programs that modernize county government and improve services for its residents. The programs are judged on innovation, creativity, effectiveness, measurable results, and increased public understanding of government programs, which helps build trust and increase community engagement, as you know, which is very valuable. In addition to the innovation and success of the program, the awards also reflect the dedication and groundbreaking work of the county employees who bring them to life in order to change lives for the better. In this case, more than 20,000 county residents, as well as the region, are the beneficiaries. This morning, we'll hear from representatives of this program, and afterwards, we'll respectfully request a group photo with representatives and some of the Commissioners, if you're able, all, hopefully.
Yeah, we all come down.
All right, good deal. Afterwards, okay, now it is my pleasure to introduce our presenters from Clackamas County Health, Housing and Human Services, Deputy Director Adam Brown and Lauren Decker, who was the Coordinated Housing Access Program Supervisor at the time of the award application. Lauren is now the Housing Services Manager.
Please, please introduce yourself and welcome.
Good morning, Chair Smith. And Commissioners, Adam Brown, Deputy Director, Health Housing and Human Services.
Good morning. Lauren Decker, Housing and Community Services, and I'm the Housing Services Manager.
Go ahead.
So Chair, Commissioners, on behalf of the county and the hundreds of dedicated staff in Health Housing and Human Services, we are so proud to be here with you this morning to accept and celebrate this award. Our coordinated housing access system and the improvements that system has undergone over the past few years is a shining light and demonstration of what we're truly capable of here in Clackamas County. We do things the Clackamas County way. Here's what that means in the context of accessing housing services in our community. In 2020, when our system had very limited resources, we had a backlog of over 1,600 calls for help. People facing a housing crisis had to wait up to 12 weeks to get a call back. In 2021, first with one-time COVID-19 funding and then ongoing funding from the Support of Housing Services measure, we launched an effort to improve coordinated housing access. This included focus groups, collaboration with community partners, a roadmap to the future, hiring new staff, development of a training program called Housing First Aid, with over 200 community partners having taken this training, system coordination, and all of this under the brilliant leadership from Lauren. By 2023, the backlog of calls was cleared, and Clackamas County was answering calls for help live seven days a week. We responded to over 19,000 calls and submissions online in just the last year alone. This means that whether you're a single mom or dad struggling to pay rent in Malala, someone living alone in a tent in Newell Creek Canyon, a family doubled up in Milwaukee, or someone living in their car at French Prairie Rest Area, we have dedicated staff and community partners ready and able to listen to their story, identify their unique needs, and draw on any resources we have available to meet those needs.
Thank you. I'd like to talk a little bit about CHAW, Coordinated Housing Access, and how it works. And also, I'm very proud to be here to represent Clackamas County. So CHAW is the central access point for people who are in a housing crisis. Everyone who contacts us gets an assessment, and when possible, and usually it is, we can match them to either a program or at least community resources that fit their needs. Clackamas County Coordinated Entry, our approach is different than others because we actually take the time to sit down with folks, hear their story, and we feel that everybody feels seen and heard when they reach out to us for help. Back in 2017 and 2018, it was hard to manage the call log then. We were calling people back within three business days, so it was tough. But then the pandemic hit, and one day, we were looking at having over 1,600 calls, calls on our call log. All of those folks were worried and not sure how they were going to pay their rent, or they were experiencing literal homelessness. We came up with some short-term solutions. We hired some temps. We had some really great community teamwork. Specifically, I'd like to acknowledge Richard Howells, who is here today. I reached out to that group and said, hey, we're really behind on calls. Please let us, let people know we're trying our best. And Richard stepped up and said, hey, instead of criticizing you, how can we help? And we were able to pull together a volunteer group that temporarily helped us decrease our volume.
And Commissioners, that's with the support of the Homeless Solutions Coalition at Clackamas County. Richard's on their board.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Adam.
We still needed more help. Adam reached out to our CHAW team in 2022, pulled us together, and said, what do you need in order to be successful? And the answer was, we need more people. Today, we have a fully functioning and nationally recognized coordinated entry system. CHAW is effective. We use lightest touch, meaning we sit down and we get to the root of the problem. We don't just hand out vouchers, but we, for example, we had a woman come in saying, I need a voucher. This was a 27-year-old mom with a new baby. She said she needed a voucher. When we sat down and spoke with her and used our skills and asked her, what do you really feel like you need right now? She broke down in tears and said, I need to go to treatments. I'm ready for inpatient today. And we were able to connect her to that service. We've done over 20,000 assessments in the past three years. We've moved from having only two full-time employees on our team to 16 full-time employees on our team. And we can answer calls between 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. every single day of the week, including holidays. Thank you to the CHAW team. I don't know if anyone really knows how hard this work is, to answer call after call people in crisis, but our CHAW team, they're amazing. They have huge hearts. So thank you for showing up and giving the compassion you give every day. Especially, I want to thank our coordinator, Donna Davis. She's really the backbone to the CHAW team. She keeps things running smoothly and never lets people fall through the cracks. Thank you, Adam Brown, Denise Swanson, Joey Johns, Brenda Durbin, and Vaheed Brown for your amazing leadership. And most of all, thank you, County Commissioners, for your continued support in making Clackamas County a better place for all.
Thank you for the presentation. I know Commissioners will make some comments. I want to say thank you from really the bottom of my heart. You know, we sit here at this dais as Commissioners and policymakers represent the public, and we say, we would like to see this done. And let's find some money to do it, but we don't tell you how, certainly. And I don't think it's our job to tell you how. So you folks made this happen. You saw the need. I hope you were given enough latitude for creativity from the leadership of sitting at this dais, because like you say, not all one approach works. You used creative ideas, you implemented creative solutions, and like you say, you're doing it the Clackamas way. I just want to salute you all. This is one of the proudest moments I've ever had, sitting as Chair of this Commission, representing all employees of Clackamas County. Tears come to my eyes right now in this. I am just so very, very happy. And when I say we were the only county from Oregon acknowledged, wow, that's something. And then I hear today that in the last four years, Clackamas County has received more national awards than any other county in Oregon. So employees, keep doing what you're doing, and we'll just try to get out of your way. Thank you very much. I'm not sure who was first. Commissioner West, you're up.
Just a warm-hearted thank you and job well done. I remember hearing about this program. When I first became a Commissioner, I sat down with the Colin and the Brown Brothers, Vaheed and Adam. Martha coined that statement. But, and you guys showing me how you were doing the basics in a stellar way first, the things that we had control over during this crisis, what can we control but do with excellence right now? And then what's feasible, and what's replicatable? And you guys did that with CHAW. People often say, well, how is Clackamas County so much different in its outcomes than the rest of the metro area of Oregon or the region? Why are you a pocket of excellence? It's because of really great fundamentals like CHAW. CHAW is a fundamental resource and ability for us to get in front of the client and to meet them exactly where they are in their human need. It's a systematic and dynamic way to collect and analyze data that allows us to then implement resources to provide better care for people. And it starts with a great assessment. You are looking at an individual, not just in their circumstance, but you're looking at the individual. You're looking at the things in their lives, their story, who they are, those specific things, and you are wrapping tailored resources to that individual. It's more than a sandwich or a tent. You're treating that person like a person. And that is how we should operate as a community. That is replicatable. That is what is missing throughout Oregon. And it's just an honor to partner with all of you as we tackle these problems moving forward. But it starts with the basics and foundational things like a really good assessment, understanding who we are handling, and the charge that we have to do that well and with integrity. And you guys have done that. So I'm proud of you guys. I think that more counties should look at following in our footsteps and figuring out how to replicate this. Vaheed, you're sitting over there, but you are instrumental in making this happen. Director Cook, you and your whole team, just to all of you and everybody in this room who is a part of this, we are really, really excited of the work you guys have been doing. So just wanted to, you know, share those words, but I'm really proud of this. I think that it is the right way to provide care to people, and it's the ethical way to do it, and it's the way to get results, and so, good job.
Thank you. Commissioner Scholl.
Yes, good morning, everyone, and thank you for that report. Good government responds to the needs of the people in order to create a better society. And here in Oregon, the cost of housing, the economic challenges that many of our residents face, cause some very serious housing insecurity. And that housing insecurity can also cause family problems, family pressures, even mental health issues. So shelter being a primary need of everyone, I'd like to thank all of you who worked on the Coordinated Housing Access Improvement Program, and congratulations on this award, and thank you for your part in alleviating this housing problem we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Savis.
Lauren, Adam, and team out there, congratulations. Thanks for all your great work. I won't repeat everything that's been said, other than I want to say that I appreciate the solutions-oriented culture that we have, and I think that's huge, and making sure that we identify the gaps, fill the gaps, and this is one great example. We have a long way to go. We have a lot of need out there. I mentioned this before, but just on my way in today, you know, I can count the people on the street that need help. And so, our work's not done, and I appreciate everyone who comes in with a culture of being solution-oriented. So thank you very much. Congratulations, and we're proud of your work.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader.
Well, kudos to you guys. This was one of our pinnacles of the National Association of Counties. They don't give awards out easily. They truly look for innovation and excellence as we move forward with programs across the nation, with our other colleagues in counties. And the fact that we are now a national model of how to do outreach is all because of your hard work and who you are. Because Commissioner West and I were having a conversation this morning about what does it mean to do what we do? What does it mean to do what we all do together? And I said, the real key is what our jobs really are. If you can just get our egos out of the way, it's all building community together. So really, when you have that focus and you have that rubric that you're working with, it'll always drive you to the kind of work that you folks do for the less people who are vulnerable. And I just appreciate you, and thank you so much for just be the shining stars you are for the good of our community.
Thank you very much. Well, I would like...
Can we request a photo at this point?
That's what I was going to say. Thank you. You put the words in my mouth. You're so anxious. Everybody, come on up for a picture. Don't be bashful. Hey, Richard, you want to come in? You help me this. Thank you.
Martha, why don't you stand in the back? Just a second.
I am the manager. Absolutely. Who wants to make a hand?
No. We're good.
Absolutely. Come on, Richard. We'll let you call back. Do we need to scooch together?
Couple with this one first. Picture you think I walk up inside. Couple there. Couple with this one. Got it? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all. Very nice. Thank you. Welcome to the House. Gary, do we have, what's next?
Next is reading and adoption of previously approved land use ordinance. Item 1, Adoption of a Previously Approved Comprehensive Plan and Zoning and Development Ordinance Amendments, ZDO-288, Utility Facilities. Chair Smith, go ahead.
The side will be rescheduled to the August 8, 2024 Business Meeting at 10:00 a.m., because what they have done, Commissioners, they have been able to streamline the process for us. Jane, would you like to make any comments?
Only that, yes, this is being moved to next week because, not because of the Board, but because DAF has a significantly revised recommendation that requires notice. So we will be able to bring that before you next week, as you stated.
Thank you very much. Gary, what's next?
Thank you. Item 2, Adoption of a Previously Approved Comprehensive Plan and Zoning and Development Ordinance Amendments, ZDO-285, Minor and Time-Sensitive Comprehensive Plan and Zoning and Development Ordinance Amendments and New Housing Options. Caleb Hugel, Assistant County Counsel, will present.
Thank you, Gary. Good morning, Commissioners. The item this morning is to adopt an ordinance approving ZDO-285, a package of legislative amendments to the Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan and Zoning and Development Ordinance that is intended to comply with new state and federal mandates, clarify existing language, correct errors, or adopt additional provisions that require only minimal analysis. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on the proposal on April 22, 2024, and voted to recommend that the Board approve the proposal with modifications. The Board then held a public hearing on the proposal on May 8, 2024, voted 3 to 2 to approve the proposal as recommended by staff, and directed staff to draft an ordinance and findings reflecting that decision. On June 6, 2024, staff presented a draft ordinance and findings for the Board's consideration, and the Board voted to table the item to a future date. Today is that future date. The ordinance before you today will approve ZDO-285 as recommended by staff. Findings supporting the decision are attached as an exhibit to the ordinance. It is staff's recommendation that you adopt the ordinance, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have on the materials before you today. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner West.
Am I correct that we were, I chaired this last meeting where we tabled it to today? We are only, am I right, confirming the language that you're presenting before us based on a previous Board decision? So we are not making a decision today whether or not, we're not revising whether or not we're supporting this ZDO-285. This is the language that you have written to be compliant with the majority vote.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Savis, you're up.
Yeah, I recall this very well, and a significant discussion. And while I understand the technical nuance of what we're doing today, I will retain my position of opposition on this.
Any other comments or questions on this? I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, I'll make a motion.
Go ahead. I think we have some language.
I'm looking for it.
That's okay. We have time.
I'm digging. Somebody give me a, is it on this, it's not on the page? Bottom of Page 1. I don't, hmm, 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 there. Oh, thank you, thank you. I move that we read ZDO-285 by title only.
Second? Commissioner West has moved we read ZDO-285 by title only. Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Would the Clerk please take the poll?
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioners' office?
No.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 4-1. Thank you very much. Would the Clerk please read the ZDO by title only?
Ordinance ZDO-285, an ordinance amending Chapter 4 of the Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan, amending Sections 202, 315, 316, 317, 401, 406, 510, 511, 512, 602, 833, 839, 845, 1001, 1006, 1012, 1013, 1102, and 1307 of the Clackamas County Zoning and Development Ordinance, and adding new Sections 846 and 847 to the Clackamas County Zoning and Development Ordinance.
Thank you, Clerk. Can I have a motion to approve the ordinance?
Chair, I move that we adopt ordinance ZDO-285 as previously approved at the May 8, 2024 Land Use Hearing.
Second. Commissioner West has moved we approved, or excuse me, we adopt ordinance ZDO-285 as previously approved at the May 8, 2024 Land Use Meeting. Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would the Clerk please take the poll?
Commissioners' office?
No.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 4-1. Thank you very much, Commissioners. Gary, what's next?
Next is a public hearing. Item 1, First Reading of an Ordinance Amending County Code Chapter 7.01, Vehicle Parking and Towing, and Code Chapter 2.07, Compliance Hearings Officer. No fiscal impact, no county general funds are involved. Scott Seaco, the Assistant County Counsel, and Assistant County Counsel will present, and Under Sheriff Jesse Ashby. Go ahead, please.
Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chair...
Please introduce yourself.
Chair Smith, as indicated by Administrator Schmidt, I am Scott Seaco. I'm one of the Assistant County Attorneys.
Good morning. My name is Jesse Ashby, and I am an Under Sheriff with the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office.
Welcome.
And Commissioners, we're here today to talk about some proposed code amendments, and there are several that are included, but the primary one that I suspect the discussion will be focused on is administrative warrants, and particularly administrative warrants for RVs that are occupied, that are being parked in county right-of-way, and that are refusing to move despite receiving prior notice and prior outreach services, outreach efforts, and that are also causing health and safety impacts on the community. And so, it's this very narrow sliver of RVs, occupied RVs, that we're here to talk about. And really, what we're here to talk about is giving staff a tool, that tool being the ability to go into Circuit Court and ask the judge, ask a judge to issue a warrant so that we can tow these vehicles, again, when all of these other criteria are met. It's a tool of last resort. It's a tool that without which we are not able to tow some of these and clean up some of these locations, because the practical impact is you can't tow one of these RVs when somebody's living inside of it. And again, last resort, this is not something that we'll be doing when other options are available, but there are some circumstances where the impacts on the community, we have situations where there's excessive trash accumulating, human waste, there are drug paraphernalia, there are crime that's happening. We've had certain situations where there've been injuries, fights, I believe there's been stabbings at some of these locations. And so, there are times when balancing the totality of the circumstances, towing these vehicles and moving them is warranted. This piece of the code will be administered by the Sheriff's Office, so the Under Sheriff is here to answer any questions you might have for them. They're the kind of boots on the ground out there talking to folks in conjunction with the various partners, community partners, that are involved in these issues, and just to list a few, and many of them have representatives here today. But DTD is involved in this because this involves county right-of-way, DA's office. DA's office is involved, and Bill Stewart is here, in case you have questions for him. H3S is involved because they are key components to the outreach that goes on before we would ever attempt to implement this tool. We also have talked with the presiding judge, who's spoken with the other judges in Circuit Court, who has indicated this is something that they are willing to consider and will issue when warranted. And then we have community partners of Love One and Father's Heart, who are also out on the ground, working with these folks, trying to get them services before utilizing this tool becomes necessary. Couple of other quick things I wanted to point out are that the other, and I'll just mention them quickly, the other amendments that are being proposed along with this, there's one that also goes with the towing code, and that has to do with inventorying the contents of vehicles. And again, just mentioning it so you're aware, essentially, there's a process where any time a vehicle's towed, whether it's an RV or not, the contents of that vehicle have to be inventoried, listed, to make sure that they're not lost, essentially. And so, we're amending that just slightly to clarify that we will only be listing valuables, weapons, evidences, certain items out of the vehicle, as opposed to every single item in any vehicle. So relatively... So relatively minor clarification, but just wanted to make sure you're aware of that. And then the final change actually occurs to Chapter 2.07 of the County Code. And essentially, what we're asking for here is that that section of the code already allows administrative warrants for certain code violations. Specifically, right now, it's marijuana violations, if there were unlawful marijuana grows, and then also for chronic nuisance. And so the thought right now, though, is if we're going to be allowing these administrative warrants generally, let's expand that and, again, make this tool available to, for other code violations as well. And so those are really the three key components of this ask. We're asking that this be adopted on an emergency basis in order for it to be able to be implemented immediately. Again, not that it will be used immediately, but just to have this tool available if it does need to be used. And with that, of course, if you have any questions, I will stop talking, and I don't know if the Under Sheriff has anything specific that he wants to add, but thank you.
I do.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Obviously, well, maybe not obviously, the Sheriff's Office is walking a very delicate balance here in this ask, and we appreciate you considering this. You know, the Sheriff's Office, we are always trying to kind of, we're trying to land the plane on being responsive to two different groups of community members. We've got the people that are living in the neighborhoods that are being affected by those RVs, but we also want to be sympathetic and responsive to the folks that are in the RVs. And so we're always trying to land that. And luckily for the Sheriff's Office, we have great partners with all the folks that were previously mentioned, all the other county organizations and nonprofits that are helping the Sheriff's Office navigate this. And so I just want to kind of assure you all that, you know, we recognize what we're asking here is kind of an ask, and we are going to be responsible with this, and thoughtful, and I think the point that makes it, drives it home the most is the judicial oversight, and I think that's been brought up before. All we will be doing is proposing a set of facts to a judge who will make a determination as to whether or not we're there or not for the folks that we're working with. So that's, I'll, of course, answer any questions, but I wanted to share that with you all.
Before we go to questions, is there anybody in the room who would like to speak on this? I would like to acknowledge, that comes up later in the officials. There's Assistant District Attorney Bill Stewart in the room, who has worked on this at the District Attorney's Office for a long time. Is there any comments, sir, that you would like to make?
Oh, I support.
Elvis, you will be called up during the public hearing portion of this meeting. This is the presentation portion. Thank you very much. Anybody, Bill, would you like, okay, thank you very much. I just want to acknowledge ADA Bill Stewart for his work on that. Thank you very much. Do the commissioners have any questions? I think Commissioner West, you're up first.
Yeah, just, this whole topic is moving really fast in our state, and it's kind of a whirlwind, at least for me right now, is what we see happening in Multnomah County. We just had the city passed camping ordinances to try to clean up some of the streets and the public camping. That was happening in Portland, the sheriff won it, was oppositional to that, so that person was not booked into the jail system for breaking the ordinance. And then we've seen the Supreme Court make a decision with Grants Pass, and that seems to be in direct conflict with state law that was sponsored by Governor Kotek when she was Speaker of the House. That was House Bill 3115 and House Bill 3124. And then now we're doing a unique thing here in Clackamas County. There just seems to be a lot of pushing and pulling and opposing kind of efforts and struggles here within the system. I think it's our job as a local government to find creative ways to push back where we can and to do it ethically in the right way and within the rule of law. I'm just, I'm just curious, and Council, maybe you could help us. I know you thought about this. And so I want a better understanding about, it sounds like we're going to cohesively work within our different elected jurisdictions with the sheriff and the DA and the Board of County Commissioners. We're all, it seems like, we're all in the room here, we're all working on this together. It's a little bit different than other counties, maybe, but we still have the House Bill 3115 and House Bill 3124, which worked together to create our camping, allowed the public camping on a state level regardless of what the Supreme Court said. Can you, are we going to run afoul with that? Like, with state law, like, how are we working, how does this work? And it doesn't work in other places? And where are we within local law right now?
Sure. I can do my best to answer that question, Commissioner West. I think the key distinction here is that we are not proposing a camping ban. And that's really what state law and even this most recent U.S. Supreme Court case focused on was, to what extent you can prohibit camping, period, within a certain jurisdiction. And that's not at all what we're proposing doing. There is state law, in fact, there are state procedures for cleaning up specific areas, and that's really what this tool is focused on. So it's when a certain specific area within the county or a certain specific vehicle in some instances gets to be so problematic and the impacts from that get to be so great that on the balance of the circumstances, we feel that we need to move that vehicle. That's all we're talking about. We're not prohibiting camping, we're not saying you can't camp in the right-of-way or you can't camp in an RV. We're just saying that sometimes when it gets so bad, we have no choice but to move that specific vehicle. And so with that, I think we'll be okay.
Can you quickly walk me through, like, I have, I'm a guy in an RV and I'm problematic. How would you deal with me? Like, what does that look like process-wise?
Sure. I mean, I can, I think the sheriff can speak to some of this, the under sheriff can speak to some of that, and maybe I'll let him start.
Yeah, I think, you know, what, again, in your scenario, I think typically what happens is we start to get phone calls from neighbors, we start to get alerted by our nonprofits or mobile crisis response, that there's a situation that's kind of developed, business owners, we were all here last week. So I think, you know, the first thing is we go out and we, with our nonprofits, with mobile crisis, see what the situation is on the ground, start offering services, see where the person's at, see what we can do to help them, you know. And then in your scenario, you're not really interested maybe in our services or what we provide or can provide. So then we start to give some sort of warnings about, well, these are our concerns, you know, gray water being on the street, hypodermic needles, trash, whatever, we're dealing, drugs being dealt, whatever. Of course, if drugs are being dealt, that's a crime and we don't need this warrant. Well, we have other ways to deal with that. But, so, I think we would be, you know, repeated efforts, and I think of reaching out with kind of a consistency day after day. And at some point, I think the group, the collective group that we've discussed here kind of gets to the point where, hey, we've done every, we literally cannot do anything else. It's now time to put something on a piece of paper and take it to a judge and say, you know, we need to, we need to have some sort of enforcement action taken here. And I think that's, I mean, that's pretty broad, but I think that's in my mind how I envision this.
Are we ripe for lawsuits from special interest groups that want to allow this behavior to continue?
Sure. I think, I think the answer to that is yes. Anytime you try something new and anytime you're out in front of something, there's always a risk of lawsuits. And this is an evolving area of law. Again, there was just recently a Supreme Court decision. So I can't sit here and tell you that this is completely bulletproof. I think we have given ourselves the best opportunity to succeed and to withstand any challenges that we can do. Again, a lot of the constitutional standards here are balancing, our balancing act and its reasonableness. And we're building all of those things into this ordinance, and then on top of that, we're adding the layer of judicial oversight, which is going to give us an extra layer of protection. And our hope, our anticipation is that when, if and when a court considers that, they determine that our actions are reasonable here.
Thank you for your presentation and for answering my questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Savas, you're up.
Yeah, I'm going to ask you a very basic question, because I get this question posed to me a lot, so I will refer people to this meeting video so they can hear it directly from you, Under Sheriff, or Council, whoever chooses to answer, and that is, basic question, is camping on our streets and sidewalks legal? Or is there an ordinance that prevents that? Or speaks to that?
In a general sense, we do not have an ordinance that outright prohibits it. So there are parking ordinances, which is what we're actually dealing with today with Chapter 701. So there's illegal parking and then there's legal parking, there's parameters on that. But in a general sense, there's no blanket prohibition in Clackamas County about camping on the streets.
Secondly, as it relates to this one particular street that we've been focusing on, for example, we have both campers, vehicles, RVs, campers that don't have, aren't motorized, and campers that, you know, and we also have tents. So if someone is camped in a tent, will this administrative warrant help resolve that if they're on a street in a parking area or a sidewalk?
No, the administrative warrant provisions are specifically for vehicles.
For vehicles.
Yeah, there's already procedures in place that are actually mandated by state law for removing of camps if and when that occurs. But in this case, again, it's kind of a unique problem where somebody is in a vehicle and there's no way to tow that vehicle with someone occupying it.
Okay. Last question, and then I have a comment, and that is that if someone's camped on a sidewalk, right, and let's say it's near a bus stop, or it's down the street where someone has a disability and they rely on the sidewalk for their travel, is there, is there any tool, legal tool, to remedy that?
Sir, I'm not aware of, I'm aware of a lawsuit in Multnomah County related to this. I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know where they are at with that. But I'm unaware of any enforcement tool that the Sheriff's Office could take, other than following the procedures that Mr. Seaco said, which would be to post it and require, you know, I haven't had that circumstance come up. I mean, I think there's a balancing test. I certainly would seek out County Counsel's opinion if I found that fact pattern to see if there was a way to, you know, move around that. But currently, I'm unaware of any way we could move faster than the 10 days required by posting.
Sorry, Commissioner, I just wanted to add, there is, and perhaps Bill Stewart can answer this question better than I can. I do recall there being an aspect of a criminal charge of disorderly conduct, that if you're impeding traffic, whether it be on a sidewalk or in a street, that could be a misdemeanor crime. I don't know the exact current status of that off the top of my head, if that's still part of that statute or not, but there could be a remedy there as well.
Okay. So my comment, this is more for my colleagues that I'm directing it to, not to you folks, and that is that, you know, my suggestion, request that we take up a parking ordinance adjustment to a deal with some of these things where we don't have the tools, I would still advocate for that. I do recall that there was another commissioner that was interested in that, and I believe that was one of the things that we were going to schedule, but here it is a year later, and we haven't had that scheduled. The other thing, too, is that I really support this effort here today, and I don't know if we need any language changes to declare an emergency to make this go into effect immediately.
It is in the ordinance already.
Okay, great.
I'll deal with that, Commissioner Savas, when the time is appropriate in this hearing to deal with that particular issue. Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Seaco, Under Sheriff Ashby. For people watching this this morning, Clackamas County has many housing options for people in need, and our capacity to help people is growing all the time. There's no need in Clackamas County for someone to live in a squalor or unsafe situation. Also, in September, we will hear from the District Attorney on his plan for deflection. I think that plan, combined with this modification of our ordinance on vehicle parking and towing, should result in a much greater level of public safety, cleanliness, and just a better overall living situation for everybody. So I support this change. And also, I'd like to ask a question for the Under Sheriff. What is the process for holding a RV once it's been towed? And what is the procedure for covering the cost of that? And what is going to be the maximum length that an RV can be held?
Yeah, I think Mr. Seaco has a better handle on the answer to your questions. Thank you.
Sure. And Commissioner Shaw, there are state laws that govern the holding periods for any towed vehicles, including RVs. It actually depends on the appraised value of the vehicle, but the holding period is any, the minimum holding periods are anywhere from between 15 days to 30 days. They, of course, can be held longer. While they're being held, we would ensure to give individuals access to their, any personal property that they want to retrieve, and of course, would encourage people to take their vehicles and just move them elsewhere. Again, this is, this is just for folks who are unwilling to move and-
And so if we have a situation where the RVs are held at a place that has a cost to the county, how do we pay for that?
Sure. So the state law actually does pass the costs of the towing and the storage onto the owners of the vehicle. So that's one way. If they're, if they're able to pay, then they would pay to reclaim that. But what we have been doing with cleanup of RVs to this point is just finding various funds from different places. So we've, one area that we had is a grant from Metro for certain abandoned RVs. I think we've in the past gotten funds from Administrator Schmidt, we've gotten funds from sustainability, but it's basically cobbling together these funds from a variety of places. There is no sustainable source of state funding at this point that we've found.
Well, thank you, gentlemen, for your work on this.
Commissioner West?
Commissioner Shaw got to one of my last questions. The state should fund this. That they, it's their responsibility to fund this and stop passing that on to local communities. We already have enough to deal with, and the state should probably adequately start funding these things and get a little more serious. My next question is for Administrator Schmidt. If I remember correctly, a motion was made, last time we took up this topic, when the chair was out, I was vice chair, we, it begs the question, where do these people then go or where can we have them? We've talked frequently about the Salvation Army-type model that Commissioner Shaw and I toured and were impressed by over there by Marine Drive. And I'm just kind of curious, we have an update regarding that motion. And Commissioner Shaw, I didn't know if you had any thoughts about that or you've heard anything, but I liked to maybe know. We've got to put people somewhere. Also, we have these practical realities, and there is a good model for us with the Salvation Army that we saw. I don't know, do you have any thoughts on that?
Yes, you also discussed this when you discussed the Clackamas Road Gate issue about where to help move people or place people when they're moved. Our director, our Transportation Development Staff and Health Housing Human Services Staff did present you what we'll do in those cases, so that has been presented to you. We can share that with you again.
Okay. Wait. So, do we remember the motion? Was the motion to just present to us some options where we could-
I don't remember your motion, commissioners. I'll have to look that up and see exactly what the board-
Okay. I'm just kind of curious where we're at with, like, that next step.
Commissioners, I'm going to focus our attention on the business before us today, and it's very limited, it's administrative warrants for RVs. Whereas we've talked about a lot of ancillary issues surrounding this, and it's all good talk, I don't disagree with that, but for today, we have a solution to the huge, humongous problem out there. So if we could just, I'd like to go ahead and open the hearing, take public testimony, and you all will have a second opportunity to comment after the public hearing. So if we can be focused on what's before us today, I would appreciate it, because we have a lot of business to do today. And we have, bring it to issues on Tuesdays, Ben. So anybody, bring it to issues on Tuesdays and we can discuss it. Thank you. For now, have you finished the presentation today, folks? Okay, what I'm going to do, thank you very much for coming forward, I'm going to open the public hearing on this topic and ask if there's anybody in the room who would like to testify, and I'd have at least one person. Elvis Clark, would you come forward, please? State your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Elvis Clark, I live in the city of Milwaukee. We do get some RVs parked in the streets there. Yeah, I support this language change because after the Supreme Court decision on the Grants Pass thing in June, this was after you met on this issue on June 12. That kind of frees up, I think, the cities and counties to do more to address the people that are living on the streets in RVs that are, that's their only living situation. So, and if the, I think the other issue is to designate a certain area for maybe the RVs to go to, and I think that's maybe another tool that could be available to people that maybe like living in RVs for some reason, and, or give the county more chance. And I know the Metro funding may be adaptable if you push it to setting up a designated area for the RVs. Now Cascade Policy Institute had looked at the Expo Center for Multnomah and recommended that kind of solution for getting some of their RVs parked in the streets with people living in them as a solution. living in them as a solution to relocating them. And I know the state laws are still kind of preventing, or raise issues as to the reasonableness of relocation, but that should be addressed. The state legislature should be asked to maybe interpret that, what they mean by reasonable accommodation. And so, that's all I have to say. I support this measure, and thank you.
Thank you for your points, Elvis, for coming forward. We have another card, Les Poole. Please come forward, state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners. Les Poole, I've lived in the county here for longer than I care to admit, and I love it. I appreciate Commissioner Shaw's questions, because as I was sitting there, I was taking a few notes and just trying to, you know, get a handle on this. And I've got a lot of experience with right-ofaways and transportation and the nuances of land use, and I do speak in support of this. I think it's absolutely critical that the definition of an RV is very clear. A pickup with a camper on it is not an RV, correct? Just a question. And in a practical sense, if someone doesn't have tags on the vehicle to begin with, they probably don't have any insurance. Oftentimes, they drove it to a location, barely got it there, they're out of gas, the battery's so far gone, they can't jump the thing. And I'm not trying to be a smart aleck about it, but that's the reality. And so, sometimes these folks are brought into treatment, or they're picked up for a warrant or a violation, and now, all of a sudden, they've got an abandoned vehicle. And so, I think it's very critical, and I totally appreciate that there will be a very careful inventory of their property. You know, as bad as they're living, and as bad as the RV, the condition may be, things they own, whatever they may be, need to be protected, inventoried. And frankly, a lot of these folks, as we all know, have got some serious problems. And what happens is, if something gets impounded, or something occurs where their property is no longer in their control, or it's taken, their first assumption is that it was stolen. You'll be accused of stealing their vehicle, stealing their home, and I don't, I'm not here to say that that's legitimate. I'm just trying to express what will happen, and what kind of feedback, and where will it send up. My other question about how would this work is that since we've got a very high expense to tow a motorhome, if you've never done it, it's spendy. And as we heard earlier, the owner of the vehicle is responsible for the towing. Well, if it's towed away and placed in storage, and you've got a $500 lien or whatever against it, it's gone. So, their ability to recover a worthy motorhome versus something that's totally abandoned or unsafe or tested for drugs, I think is just something to think about. And again, I know it's a very difficult situation. It's kind of unfortunate that our police are spending so much time dealing with this, as are you. I don't need to tell you this, but I'll say it, time is money.
Wind up, please, sir.
And I would just say that, in conclusion, that this is an emergency situation. I think if they're very, very specific about exactly what we're doing, and implemented immediately as an emergency, I would support that. If not, if it's passed 90 days, if it was passed today, it wouldn't be effective for 90 days, and we'd be in November. So, I do support it, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Gary and Jane, there was a question posted, I don't have any answer to, and maybe somebody in the room can answer it. Is a pickup truck with a camper considered an RV? Thank you, Scott Seko, from County Council for coming forward to answer that.
Hi again. Actually, just to be clear, even though we've been discussing primarily RVs, this vehicle, this code really applies to all vehicles.
That's what I thought.
If somebody was living in any type of a vehicle, or a trailer for that matter.
Thank you. Got it. Thank you very much. Gary?
Sorry, I'd like to follow up on Commissioner West's question. Tony and I have done the research while you were having the public testimony. It is true, Commissioner, on June 12th, 2024, when you had this policy session, there was a motion that was approved, that staff would bring back proposals for car camping or other options for people who might be displaced by this movement. And so, I was out that day, that's not an excuse, but I'm going to ask the staff in the room, has any movement happened on that? H3S, District Attorney, DTD, has any, or County Council, has any action happened on that board motion? I need someone to come forward.
I only see one representative from H3S, and only one representative from DTT, and I am not prepared to answer the question, but Dan, you're sure brave. Come and help us out on that.
Because this impacts the decision you're about to make, Commissioners.
Yeah, I know we do, and Rod Cook, thank you.
If you recall, you have your Administrators Housing Task Force discussion, and we had that discussion, and we were discussing it, and we're going to bring something forward. We haven't brought something forward yet.
Ditto. I could say that the DA's Office, DTD, Health Housing and Human Services, they are talking about this issue and trying to put something together.
Okay, so we're working on it, but we don't have a solution for you today.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. We're still in the public hearing portion of this meeting. Excuse me, is there anyone else in the room who would like to testify on this particular topic? See, and Tony, is there anyone online who would like to testify?
If you would like to testify on the ordinance regarding County Code, Chapter 7.01 and Chapter 2.07, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received.
Madam Chair, do not have any hand raised.
Thank you very much. I will now close the public hearing portion of this meeting and move on. A point of clarification, we have two opportunities in the script. One is to pass the ordinance by title only, and then read it by title only. And there's been discussion, a unanimous vote from the Dais of Commissioners would put an emergency on this, so it can go into effect immediately. Gary, at what motion do we consider the emergency declaration? In the second one, that's where I see in my script. County Council?
I'm going to ask Tony to help first, because he helped with the script. Tony, please.
Chair Smith, Commissioners, in order to adopt the ordinance by title only, in a single sitting, as you would like to do, as you were directed staff to do, you have to read the ordinance twice and adopt it in a single hearing. In order to do so, you need to do so unanimously. All five of you must vote on it and agree it must be a 5-0 vote.
Both times, it needs to be. That's my point of clarification, because the script doesn't say that.
Yes, all three motions must be a 5-0 vote.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. I will entertain a motion.
I move we read the ordinance by title only.
Second. Commissioner Shaw has moved, we read the ordinance by title only, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? What I'd like to say regarding this, there's been some very good testimony. This Board of County Commissioners is reacting to a very, very difficult and delicate situation that exists on our roadways in Clackamas County, an incorporated area. We are responding to constituents' complaints. Do something, do something, do something. So, we're doing something. This is one, one action we're taking on a very huge encompassing problem. There's been much research on how to do this. Some say, oh, we might get a lawsuit. Yeah, you know, so what if we get a lawsuit? We don't accomplish anything without, there's always an inherent risk involved. We have the cooperation of the sheriff's office, which I am so grateful for, because many jurisdictions don't have that. We have judges willing and ready with judicial oversight to implement the program. Many jurisdictions don't have that. It may not be bulletproof, but guess what? We're trying, and that's all we can do, and I so appreciate all the work that has been from the sheriff's office, from the DA's office, from our Judicial Department, and County Council, and our policy people at H3S and DTT. That's at least five agencies in this county that have come together to make this happen, and I'm very appreciative of your effort. And with that in mind, Tony, would you please take the poll?
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much, Commissioners, for the unanimous vote. Would the clerk please assign a number and read the ordinance by title only?
The ordinance been numbered 03-2024. An ordinance adopted on an emergency basis, amending Clackamas County Code, Chapter 7.01, Vehicle Parking and Towing, and Chapter 2.07, Compliance Hearing Officer.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move, I move we approve ordinance 03-2024. An ordinance adopted on emergency basis, amending Clackamas County Code, Chapter 7.01, Vehicle Parking and Towing, and Chapter 2.07, Compliance Hearings Officer.
With apologies, Commissioner, in order to adopt in a single sitting, there must be two readings, and so there is a proceeding motion to read the ordinance a second time that must be.
What do you want us to say?
I would ask that a Commissioner make a motion to read the ordinance by title only. So moved.
Seconded.
Commissioner West has moved, we read the ordinance by title only, and Commissioner Shaw has seconded that motion. Is that adequate, clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Would you please take the poll?
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Would the clerk please read the ordinance by title only? I know it, the script is very confusing, so go ahead. Thank you.
It is an unusual process, ma'am. The ordinance will be numbered 03-2024. An ordinance adopted on an emergency basis, amending Clackamas County Code, Chapter 7.01, Vehicle Parking and Towing, and Chapter 2.07, Compliance Hearing Officer.
Thank you very much. Now, can I have a motion?
I move we approve ordinance 03-2024. An ordinance adopted on emergency basis, amending Clackamas County, Chapter Code 7.01, Vehicle Parking and Towing, and Chapter 2.07, Compliance Hearings Officer.
Second. Commissioner Savas has moved that we approve ordinance 03-2024, an ordinance adopting on an emergency basis, amending Clackamas County Code, Chapter 7.01, Vehicle Parking and Towing, and Chapter 2.07, Compliance Hearings Officer. Commissioner Schrader has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Commissioner West.
I have a quick question for County Council, Ms. Fettow. When we say in the motion adopted on an emergency basis, can you explain the significance of that, and why that's important, or why we're doing that?
So, ORS 203045, subsection four, allows this board to adopt ordinances on an emergency basis when health, safety, and welfare is at issue. And what that means is that instead of this ordinance taking effect in 90 days after the second reading, it takes effect immediately.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you. Commissioner Savas?
Yeah. As we've discussed this matter last week and past, last couple of months, I have voiced my concern about timing on a number of matters, and thank you, Commissioner West, for raising the motion that was made on June 12th, try to get at some of those key issues, like what do we do with those folks when they are basically, their vehicle or home or whatnot is taken away? And so, last week, I heard that our staff would indeed be tracking those folks after this is implemented, perhaps, particularly on this street, there's a lot of moving pieces to this, all this work. So, that remains a concern of mine. I will be supporting this today. It's one piece of the tools, or one tool in the toolbox that we need. But I also want to take the time to acknowledge all the people that are working on this, all the departments, the Attorney's Office, law enforcement, H3S, and all the great work on trying to help this out, but I do, what gave me a little bit of comfort, to some degree, is that staff last week saying that they will give us, I believe, a quarterly report on the progress of the pokes that are displaced, to see how we're doing. I think that will help us, number one, from a humane standpoint, identify if there's any other needs. Secondly, to measure our effectiveness on this and identify any gaps. So, that's my comment for today. Chair, I yield back.
Thank you very much. Where are we at?
If there's no further conversation, I can take the poll if you would like.
Would you please take the poll?
Of course. Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Commissioners, thank you kindly for unanimous vote on this, and being able to move on a very critical issue for Clackamas County. You all have done wonderful work. Gary, what's next?
Thank you, Chair. Next is the consent agenda. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Clackamas County Consent Agenda. Item one, approval of the previous business meeting minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Item two, approval of a work order contract with DPI Security Incorporated for uniform screening services at designated county court-related facilities. Total value is $759,179.16 for one year, funding through fees and fines, and $593,816.40 in budgeted county general funds for the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. Item three, approval of amendment number one to an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Corrections for additional funding towards the community, toward community corrections programming. Amendment value $906,307. Total agreement value is $14,869,113 over two years, funding through the Oregon Department of Corrections. No county general funds are involved for the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. Tourism. Item one, approval of amendment number one to a personal services contract with Travel Oregon to tourism, to receive funds to implement the fiscal year 2024-25 Regional Cooperative Tourism Plan. Contract amendment value is $400,000 in one year. Total contract value is increased to $800,000 for two years. Funding is through Travel Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Transportation Development. Item one, approval of amendment number two, removing funding obligation deadline from grant agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for the Sunrise Corridor Community Visioning Project. No fiscal impact, no total grant value remains for $4 million over four years. Funding through the Oregon Department of Transportation. No county general funds are involved. Technology Services. Item one, approval of a board order authorizing a purchase order for Adobe Enterprise Volume Licensing through a cooperative contract with Dell Marketing LP. Purchase order value $23786.91 for one year, funding through departmental cost allocation and direct departmental billing, which may include a small portion of budgeted county general funds. Health Housing Human Services. Item one, approval of amendment number three, extending the duration and increasing the rent amount of a lease with North Clackamas School District Number 12 for the Women, Infants, and Children Program Services at the Wichita Center. Amendment value $11,227.56 for one year. Total lease value increased to $37,703.16 for five years. Funding through federal pass-through funds from the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of revenue grant agreement number one, grant amendment number one from the Oregon Department of Early Learning and Care for Clackamas Early Learning Hub Programming. Amendment value $341,768.46. Total agreement value is increased to $2129,032.46 for two years. Funding through the state of Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Item number three, approval of amendment number one to a grant agreement with the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission for the Driving Under the Influence of Intoxication Court Program. Amendment value $54,459. Total agreement value is increased to $188,771 for one year and nine months. Funding through the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you very much. Tony, does any Commissioner wish to remove any item off this particular consent agenda? See none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second. Commissioner Shaw has moved for approval of the consent agenda, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded that. Any further discussion? Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. I will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners, ask and convene as the Water, excuse me, the Water Environment Services Board of Directors. Gary, what's next?
Next is the Consent Agenda for Water Environment Services. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Water Environment Services. Item 1, approval of Amendment, Amendment Number 3 with Consort North America Incorporated for the Intechi II Pump Station and Force Main Expansion. Amendment value $1,419,450. Total contract value is $3,255,716. Funding through Water Environment Services Sanitary Sewer Construction Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item 2, approval of Amendment Number 2 with Jacobs Engineering Group for the Tri-City Outfall Project. Amendment value $806,051. Total contract value $2,061,086. Funding through Water Environment Services Sanitary Sewer Construction Fund. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you very much. Does any Director wish to remove any item off this particular consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda.
Second. It has been moved by Director Scholl and seconded by Director Schrader to approve the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda. Any further discussion? Would the Clerk please take the poll?
Director Savas.
Aye.
Director West.
Aye.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. I will now adjourn as a Water Environment Service Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. Up next is Public Communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business, which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county code. Testimony is submitted to three minutes. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. I will now take in-person testimony first. If there's anybody in the room who wishes to testify and has not dropped a blue card in the box and wishes to do so, you can do that now. I do have one blue card. That is Les Poole. Please come forward. Thank you very much. State your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Hello again, Les Poole. I've lived in the county for over 20 years, 25 years. And one of the issues I wanted to talk about today was the Sunrise Corridor and the Sunrise Project, and getting that extended beyond 122nd, where it ties into Highway 212. The next phase gets it up to 172nd, so we can service the growth and the needs as population and development surges eastward. Very critical that connectivity be part of this. And an initial design was approved by the county. It was submitted as part of the large Metro November 2020 bond measure. It was actually an income tax that blew up in their face, so to speak. But my point is that so much of the work that went into that was dominated by Metro's control of the grants and by the prevailing philosophy there. And it's a real struggle, because here we are with a need to consider distribution, not just housing or local needs, and correct, building this extension would alleviate that mess where 212 and 224 come together at Rock Creek, and it would be a dramatic improvement in the ability to travel, not just locally, but out to Highway 26 and around the state. So I hope everything could be done to keep that project on track. A couple of quick things before I go. One is, there are 36 counties in Oregon. Who has the best county fair? Hands down, coming up. So always look forward to that. Hard to believe that in a few weeks, the fair's going to be here, and all of a sudden, it's going to be Labor Day. And in spite of all the fires and the hot weather, things will cool off. And I've got a feeling that as we head towards the election in November, and given the situation that so many people are in, we're all in the same situation when you really look at it. I think you'll see a lot more folks showing up and participating and asking questions and looking for answers. I do have a question. I don't think there's probably an answer today, but who does one contact regarding the ragweed problem? It's been an incredible tansy ragweed issue. I took photos of tansy ragweed growing in Clackamas Park yesterday and various other places. Is, my question is, does that have anything to do with vector control, or is vector control only about insects? And I don't want to make a big thing about it, but who should we call?
Commissioner Schrader can answer that.
Oh, good.
I know that vector control is only about insects. And I would assume anything to do with vegetation control is with the park system. And where did you say it was growing?
Well, I've seen it in a lot of places, actually, including the highway, you know, right-of-way, which is an unfortunate place where it loves to go. I actually saw some at Rothe, Rothe Road and, and Oatfield. Just happened to notice.
Mr., thank you. Commissioner Savas?
And I took photos, so I'll send them to you. But again, it's, all I want, more than anything, is for the public to be aware that we need to address this, not that we need to punish anyone for the fact that this stuff is out of control. But it's a nasty invasive species, and I would just like to see whatever help we can get to address it.
Commissioner Savas?
I thought that Clackamas County Soil and Water Conservation District is responsible for them.
That's probably right. Thank you. I'll contact them.
Located on Beaver Creek Road. In addition, I would like to say, it's not only tansy ragweed, it's absolutely exploded in Clackamas County. We have a farm. We're trying to abate it on our farm by pulling it. And that's the only way. You can't go out and spray something that's in full bloom. Also, there's many other weeds out there, Queen Anslays. If you ever drive by a Christmas tree, it's just, it's a blanket of white. And that happened because in April, you know, our place looked pretty good. Well, what had happened in May? It rained almost the entire month of May, and it repopulated the seed in the ground, and it has just erupted, and everybody is behind. I've never seen, through private, on county roads, on public parts, I've never seen the population of weeds like it is today. And thank you for bringing that forward, Les.
Appreciate it.
Is there anybody else in the room who'd like to make a comment or public testimony? I see none. Tony, is there anyone online?
Madam Chair, I do not have any members of the public on Zoom at the moment.
Okay, well, that is the end of our list. I will close the public communication of this meeting and move forward. Gary, what's next?
Next is County Administrator Update. That's me. I'd like to recognize our employees for their fantastic work. Today, I'd like to recognize the great employees of the Clackamas County District Attorney's Office. Deputy District Attorney Jeremy Morrow was named 2024 Oregon Drug Property Crimes Prosecutor of the Year for the state of Oregon. Jeremy is a statewide expert on drug and property crimes. He professionalized and streamlined Clackamas County's search warrant process, and now leads the office's efforts to prosecute drug dealers whose business enterprise causes the death of drug users. Also from the District Attorney's Office, Deputy District Attorney Brian Powell was named Oregon's 2024 Oregon Legislative Advocate of the Year. Brian has worked with the Oregon District Attorneys Association, the state association legislative team, on a wide range of issues, primarily advancing the work of our District Attorney's Office, John Wentworth, and his work to defeat bills that would be harmful to public safety and the criminal justice system. Congratulations, Brian and Jeremy. But wait, there's more. Senior District Deputy, Senior Deputy District Attorney Brian Brock is retiring from the Clackamas County District Attorney's Office after 25 years of service in the District Attorney's Office. But instead of totally retiring, he's now going to become the Executive Director of the Oregon District Attorneys Association, a voluntary organization of all of Oregon's 36 district attorneys, deputy district attorneys, Oregon Assistant Attorney Generals, District Attorney Office Managers, and the United States Attorneys serving in Oregon.
Bravo.
So congratulations, and thank you, Brian. But wait, there's more. Our District Attorney, John Wentworth, was just elected as the President of the Oregon District Attorneys Association. Congratulations to our DA Wentworth for his leadership. So our District Attorney's Office is doing great things for Clackamas County and for Oregon. Thank you to those great employees. That is my update today, Commissioners.
Well, bravo to our District Attorney's Office, taking leadership across Oregon. I like it. Very nice for bringing that forward, Gary. I think we got an email about that earlier this week. Now it's time for Commissioner Communication. Commissioner Savas, you're up.
All right. I was just going to touch on a few things. Last Monday evening, I attended the Eldac, the Library District Advisory Committee. They were wrestling with the recommendation or the potential edits to the, to the IGA. And our County Council, Mr. Muns, and Sarah Ekman, our department head of that particular, of libraries, was present. There was a split vote, and I know that'll be coming back, but it is becoming ever clear that the issues are greater than just the IGA. And so therefore, I guess we'll be talking about that next week. Is it next week we have those library sessions? So we just want to just get an immediate idea that, by the way, that, that a lot of discussion still and consternation is still out there. The other thing I wanted to touch on, and I'll get into my transportation stuff, but a few days ago, I happened, I have family from out of town, so we decided to go and take a trip up to the mountain. And we took our route up Highway 212. I actually made, I think I made a decision that I'm going to do everything I can to avoid Highway 212. We got, I just got just past 172nd Avenue heading east, and we were stuck in traffic. And in 10 minutes, I only moved out 100 feet in 10 minutes of waiting there. So I, I found an opportunity to make a U-turn. I went up and I took, got on the Highway 26, take 205, and, you know, navigated Highway 26, and I'm going to come home that way. It's an extra 15 minutes when there's no traffic on Highway 212, but it's actually half an hour faster, easily, half an hour faster to actually go, drive all the way into Gresham and go all the way around and avoid Highway 212. That's how bad it's got. That's, it is. So Monday evening, coming Monday evening, the Region 1 Act will be meeting, and those folks, myself included, will be speaking. We have a carve-out in the agenda for rural transportation issues. The R1 Act is populated mostly with urban folks from around the region and less so about rural. And again, as I mentioned to you, there's some bylaw changes that I'm concerned about, but we'll see where we go. My concern, I just want to just reiterate, I'm very proud of the Clackamas County membership of the R1 Act that sits there. They've been attentive. They, you know, they've been there for the whole, most of them have been there for the entire duration of the existence, formation of the R1 Act. So to Bill Merchant, Bill Avison, Mayor Brian Hodgson, others, I just want to just acknowledge their, their commitment to the R1 Act. So that'll be coming up, and I'll share my little experience with the trip there as well. We, again, the big, the big issue there is that the, because it's populated and because we talked about metro, not approving, one of the speakers here today talked about the Sunrise Corridor. All federal dollars related to transportation, state dollars related to transportation, local dollars related to transportation, seem to get funneled to metro, and they got to get their blessing. And they don't always get their blessing because the bucket of money is so big, it's overscribed, and there's more projects or requests than there is money. So those with, apparently, the more political, historically, I'll just say this, my observation is, those with more political horsepower and prowess seem to get the projects, and those who don't, don't. And Clackamas County, that Sunrise Project's been on the books for over 40 years. And I don't know, I'm going to take this opportunity just to stir a comment for another discussion, but for another day, but we have a new legal counsel, Jane Veto. Hello, Jane.
Hello.
And I, I always ask myself, is there or is there not something we could possibly do or make a case that this particular system that we have, transportation funding and transportation funding decisions, I mean, maybe it is legal, and I know we've had at times some issues come up, and, and our legal counsel has indicated, well, that's more policy than it is anything else, and we can't do it. But I really structurally wonder if some of the, and again, it's very complex, there's a lot of moving pieces, but if some of these federal funding streams that are mandated to the MPOs, Metro Poles and Planning Organization, and they have certain design or intent, legislative intent, how do we continually get shorted a reasonable apportionment of those funds? I, I just, maybe I'm grabbing at straws, but it is awfully frustrating for all the folks in the rural Clackamas County and others to cope with this particular issue that we have. All of our rural cities, rural roads are being flooded because of the growth out there is so significant, and yet the transportation dollars just do not come. That's what I have for today. So Chair, I yield back.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Scholl, you're up.
Yes, good morning, and thank you. Good morning, Clackamas County. The most pressing topic that I can talk to you about today is fire safety. And I mean, this is important. Today, there's 39 fires burning in the state of Oregon. As of last night, those fires have consumed 1,263,000 acres during this fire season. That is a, an area greater than the entire acreage of Clackamas County. And I want to implore all people of Clackamas County to stop what you're doing, give some thought to fire safety, to fire safety around your home and your business. Right now, Clackamas County has zero fires. We have fires to the east in Hood River County, in Wasco County. We have fires to the south in Marion County. But right now, Clackamas County today is fire-free. Let's keep it that way. And it's very important that we do so, because currently, in the state of Oregon, there are tens of thousands of people involved in fighting these 39 fires. Should we get a fire in Clackamas County, assets for firefighting are spread thin already. We could be in a problem. So please, take a moment, think about fire safety, visit the Clackamas County Disaster Management website, learn about those things that every family and every business needs to know about preventing fire. Thank you very much for your efforts in this matter. The other thing I want to share with people of Clackamas County is, two days ago, the national debt hit $35 trillion. That is a level that just five years ago, we never dreamed we'd see. But we're at $35 trillion as of 29 July. Further, the Congressional Budget Office said just in June that the glide path that the federal government is on at this time will take us to $56 trillion national debt by 2034. That's absolutely, we can't deal with that. Things would crash before we get there. And today, you as a taxpayer, resident of the United States, will pay $907 billion just to pay the interest on the national debt for this year. And so I mention that to you, one, to implore all people of Clackamas County to pick a topic, pick an issue, communicate with your elected officials, and get involved. Because as the federal government has to cut back to deal with this problem, we can expect in the future that those federal grants that come to this county will also begin to be restricted or even dry up. Something we need to think about. We've been living, as they say, high on the hog. as they say, high on the hog the last few years with a lot of federal money poured into the counties. That will not continue. So again, I ask everybody to give some thought to your own personal role and how you might affect government at all levels. The more voices we have participating in government, the better government is. And on that note, I'd like to leave you with a thought for the day. People who think a tax boost will cure inflation are the same ones who think another drink will cure a hangover. Thank you, Clackamas County.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Yeah, thank you, colleagues. I wanted to say a few things this morning. I concur with Commissioner Scholl that please be careful out there because of wildfires. Please be extremely, extremely cautious. Back in 2020, when we experienced, I would call one of our first conflagrations, which is a word that's becoming unfortunately more and more common now. I remember in my community just seeing the sky smoke-filled and red. It was almost, it was almost an end-of-days kind of experience.
That was at my house.
I know, yeah. And we had to evacuate people. We had to get people out of there, not only folks, but their pets and their livestock. So I do believe we will be prepared should something happen, but the best way to deal with this is to prevent it to start with, for everyone's safety. And you can get information from our fire marshals about things that you can do around your home to actually make them more fire-safe, particularly in the rural areas. That's an important piece of what we do. It's also an important piece in where I live now in an urban community, because we have, we have quite the large urban canopy. So everybody is susceptible to this. The other thing is, we all know that we're having another, going to have another hot week this week. The temperatures are probably going to get quite high, at least into 90s, maybe higher. So let's make sure that people stay hydrated, stay inside. Our cooling centers, Gary, I believe, will be open, yep, for people who need that. And basically, I think if you can get to one, get to one, because heat, high heat can be a killer, and we don't want that to happen. And also, that's going to bring us to the idea of water safety as well, because in hot, and when it gets this hot, people are oftentimes going to the Clackamas River, Willamette River, so on and so forth. I know that our marine deputies will be on watch, and will be working with AMR to be careful on the river, even though it's beastly hot out. Remember, the Clackamas River is still an extremely cold river. And please, if you're going to float the river, use something that, wear a life jacket, okay? Don't go out there without a life jacket, and don't just get a little tube, get something substantive. We really do want to decrease the risk of drownings in this heat, and that is a distinct possibility. Finally, I've got to mention the dogs in this kind of weather, so make sure you keep your pups and your kitties hydrated. Keep them inside. If it's too hot, make sure that when you walk them, I know what I do is walk them in the early morning and later in the evening, because when it's that hot out, they are in grave danger of getting their paws burned. So, you know, make sure that your pets and your, I know that goes with livestock, too. I don't have livestock anymore. Used to have sheep. That's not there. But again, make sure that your livestock and your pets are okay. Finally, I wanted to talk a little bit about tansy ragwort, because I was intrigued and looked it up. And yeah, Paul, I found the information on the Conservation of the Water District thing, and it is a deadly weed, a long history in the Pacific Northwest. It's an invasive weed. It was introduced here in the early 1900s through ballast water from a ship, from Eurasia, of all things. And it is very invasive, and it is deadly for livestock as well as humans. And in fact, one of the things it says here, grazing animals, if they get, eat it and you eat their meat, you can also have, have liver damage from it. So it is a noxious weed. It is invasive, and I think we should be calling our Conservation District and get some more information from them on that. And, oh, and tomorrow, folks, if you get to come, Senator Merkley is going to be at Camp Withacum, and he has graciously asked me to introduce him on behalf of Clackamas County. But if you can all come, that would be great. I particularly, Commissioner Scholl, think we should talk a little bit to him about forestry issues, okay, and how we, how we're coping with that. So that's all I have for the day.
Thank you. Before I call on Commissioner West regarding the deadliness of tansy ragwort, livestock will only eat it if they don't have anything else to eat, just like acorns that fall off the oak trees. Yes, they are deadly to horses, but horses won't eat them if they're well-cared-for and have food. Just that caveat is important. Commissioner West, go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been a very busy week. I, maybe, I'm going to make a, I'd be remiss to not say this. I think we should push and ask for a brand-new, smart, Green New Deal that truly is environmentally friendly and does not let over a million acres of Oregon forest land burn to the ground. And I'll be, maybe this is controversial to some, it does not have anything to do with climate change. Is the climate getting warmer? Sure. It does that. It gets warmer, it gets cooler. Does it have human impact? It could, yeah. But we adapt as a people, and we figure out how to deal with problems. We don't just let acreage burn to the ground without managing our forest lands. We don't make excuses about things that are in the ether, and we can't actually quantify as problems, but we tackle problems head-on, and we manage our forest lands, and we do good public policy. This is a result after, of decades of bad policy. I'm sixth-generation Oregonian. I used to run around in these woods. My family were timber people. They worked in the mills. We did not have Armageddon and end-of-day skies when I was growing up. This is decades of really bad policy. These policies not just cause forest lands to burn to the ground, but you have rural communities that are having to be welfare now counties that aren't allowed to have the dignity of work and subsistence on the land and use these as sustainable crops. And they're being devastated by bad public policy. I hope Senator Merkley has a real forestry conversation about this at Camp Withacum, and has an honest take of it that has nothing to do with climate change, as estates burning to the ground. Hope he does that. Hope he actually talks about management of our forests. So that's my new green deal, is how do we manage forest lands ethically and properly and sustainably in a way that allows communities to thrive and to grow, and allows forest lands to stay there for generations. We just lost our cabin. We just lost the sites that we've been, my family's been there for generations. The last time we got to go there with my uncle, who's battling bone cancer, last year during our hunting trip was last year. We can't go there this year as a family. We have to make different, it's gone. People feel connected to the land. It's part of them. It's who we are as Oregonians. And you let it just burn. So every one of you that voted on all these wackadoodle policies and gaslit us on, on, on climate change and did nothing except raise our taxes and make everything more expensive, you're the problem. So let's just have an honest conversation about that. Just tired of seeing Oregon burn. Sorry. I didn't know it was kind of harsh, but that's the facts. Commissioner Scholl was much more diplomatic with his presentation than mine, and I appreciate that, but that's the truth. And I'm sorry, it's not convenient for everybody on this issue. I am really excited. I, as Commissioner Schrader, Chair Smith, and myself, had a really fun and happy meeting with Congresswoman Lori Chavez-Doreen, who's back in the district. She worked really hard to bring, am I right over $500,000?
$500,000, yes.
To help remodel a building that absolutely needs, that is tired, that needs to be remodeled to be a better 911 center and EOC, where we will hold operations during, I don't know, a massive fire that could hit our community, right? So that's the building and the resource that we need to be able to respond to emergencies. It was not designed for the purpose it's being used now. We're making do with what we have, but these funds were absolutely critical for infrastructure and for the safety and the health of the community, and she worked very hard in Congress to get those funds. And we got to do a tour and get it, and learn about where those funds are going to go directly, like what type of improvements to the building, how it's going to upgrade it in a way that will actually help us deal with disasters better and more effectively. And so I want to thank the Congresswoman for taking the time to visit Clackamas County, to continue to build good working relationships with this board, and we appreciate her efforts greatly. And we will utilize those resources to the full extent that we can. So it's pretty exciting stuff. I know the staff and Gary, the director over there, are just ecstatic about finally getting that need met, and we could not have done it without her help. And then we talked a lot about this week, about the stabilization center. I'd also be remiss to not create a little contrast here. Willamette Weekly posted this yesterday, that there's been a roundtable that the police and the city of Portland are begging Multnomah County to do a stabilization-type center to help triage and help people get the care they need. They're begging Jessica Vega-Petersen on Monday to put resources where they need to go to help people immediately where they're at in crisis and acute needs. And then that same day, KATU reports Clackamas County opens new stabilization center for addiction to be open by fall. The old women's center's going to be turned into a stabilization center to help people get the care they need. It'll be helpful with deflection. Potentially, those people will then be referred on to better and more long-term care within a recovery center. We're building out the care continuum. We're doing the local government work. We're solving local problems. You heard about the Chaw thing. But we're right here, the same day, Clackamas County does it right, and they're begging our largest county to the north to do it right. But they, for whatever reason, they're not doing those public policies. But they're working here in Clackamas, the Clackamas County where I think it's important to make those contrasts. And so I am really proud of us and the work that we've been doing specifically in this arena, and will continue to do it. And we have a busy week moving forward, and I appreciate the opportunity to give my updates, Chair.
Thank you very much, Commissioner West and all Commissioners. While we were out yesterday visiting Representative Lori Chavez-Doreen, she is very acutely aware of the fire situation, and she gave us some facts, and Commissioner Scholl quoted some of those. But she says half of all firefighters in America are situated in Oregon right now. That was a very sobering statistic. Thankfully, in Clackamas County, we don't have any, but as a reminder, we usually don't catch on fire until the end of August and the 1st of September. We've had some rains recently. It's kept it down, and it's been nice. So the best thing that our people can do is you must prepare yourself. If we have a huge, huge fire, don't think the government will come knocking on your door to save you, because they will not save you. It's up to yourself to be prepared with water, batteries for any of your devices, including medical devices. If you are on medication and need prescriptions, look forward two to three weeks and make sure you have a stock of medicine. If you have pets, have pet food for at least two to three weeks, because you may not get the assistance you need. And I understand that communication is vital. If you have a cell phone, have extra charging devices for your cell phone, because that may be your only line of communication to know what's going on. And you can go online and get the emergency alerts on your phone to be sent for you. So you must be taking care of yourself while the emergency people get to you, and it may not be as soon as you want it. I lived through the last fire where we had to be evacuated, and we were without power for three to four weeks. I can't even remember. So by the time you go back to your home, your house is full of smoke. You can't clean it. You're choking on the residual. All the appliances in your kitchen are out because they have not had the power for a month. So you scramble around to try to get your refrigeration back on to do whatever you need. And oh, by the way, yeah, I can go buy a new refrigerator. You can't find a refrigerator in the entire tri-counties area of Portland, not alone. Pick out the model you want. So it is very trying, all of these little things. I'm glad I have a swimming pool. And I have a filter system that I can get drinking water and bathing water out of my swimming pool. We also have a fish pond. So we're looking at alternative measures that we've never had to do that before. And try, just try to do that. In my area, we're in South County, we have a whole emergency management consortium of neighbors with fire trucks that we can check on each other, because we went through it, and it was pretty bad. And Commissioner Schrader, you and I toured those areas, and it was horrific. And I don't want to have to go through that again, but on the light note, on a positive note, I do think we are more, better prepared. We have a citizens' organization of Emergency Preparedness Council, who has a huge communications arm, the huge education arm that has gone out. There's technology provided by Portland General Electric with their cameras at high tops of hills and trees that can spot lightning, strike, smoke, and fires. Our emergency management fire department passed a bond that enables 40 new firefighters and a state law that allows them to go out into the countryside and douse urban vegetation, excuse me, vegetation fires and forest fires, where they weren't allowed to do that before. And we have had several of those in Clackamas County in vegetation, in the middle of a field that's starting to catch on fire. And there was one next, this week, next to my friend's house, and it's a wheat field. And none of us can understand how in the middle of a wheat field a fire starts. And it was suspicious. Everybody's suspicious. I don't know how it happens. So it's real, but we're, so far, we've been fortunate, knock on wood. About going forward, tomorrow in Moala, there is a groundbreaking for a new police department that a voter-approved bond levy that has not happened in 100 years. And so as that population is growing, voters approved to keep their community safe by adding a new police department. That was last year, this year voters approved in Moala, a new middle school. And that is the same middle school I attended, so you know it's old, and you know it needs to be replaced. And so voters in Moala have been very generous with their pocketbooks on allowing these new construction projects to happen. And I believe that's all I have, except for on the supported housing services measure for Metro. I am meeting with the top leaders on Metro Lynn Peterson and the tri-chairs to see how we can move forward and mitigate any concerns people have on that if they want to try to redo the tax. That's all the updates I have today. Thank you, Commissioners, for your good work, not only today, but this week. You've all participated well. Seeing no further business before this commission, we are adjourned.